Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to this edition of the Shammany School District's School Board or Public Works Session for Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. Ms. Burns, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mrs. Lafferty?
Here.
Mr. Linden?
Here.
Mr. Cirillo?
Here.
Mr. Sporni?
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. Everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to announce that the Board met in executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. Ms. Burns, do we have any announcements?
There are no announcements.
That brings us to Dr. McGee. Your superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. The Board will find June's enrollment report in Board docs. Enrollment is stable, and we're still looking for some kindergarteners for next year. We're sure they will materialize shortly. In thinking about what has happened since the last board meeting as far as in our schools, I can't, I couldn't report on it all. And reporting on it seems kind of silly because Chris Stanley puts up these amazing videos that can show you what actually happened. So I'm just going to allude to a couple things. Pequesting had its 60th anniversary salute to veterans. Nothing but smiles and applause and wonderful things for our Lower South, Feasterville, Trevos area community. So if you haven't, take a look at Mr. Stanley's video and the work of the Pequesting staff. Also, Field Days at middle school and elementary schools happened last week, last Friday. All we saw was smiling kids, smiling parents, smiling staff, a little bit of blood from a few scraps, scratches, scraps or scratchers and stuff, but just a wonderful experience around town, back to normal with Field Days. And next week, a week from tomorrow, the graduation of the class of 2022, scheduled for 6:30 at the Shammany High School. So in addition to that, there's many other things, so please take a look at the Shammany website and our YouTube page to, as Chris Stanley has captured, some amazing things that go on in our district. Finally, for our work session, as promised, Mr. Means here for some updates on safety and security, and it was planned prior to the tragic events in Texas, but appropriate to hear from Mr. Means.
Good evening, Mr. Allen, school board members, Dr. McGee. It's a pleasure to be here this evening in regards to talk about some things coming out of my office. It's not often I get an opportunity to speak to the Board in this format, so I am relishing that opportunity. Unfortunately, based on recent events, not a good, great topic. But one thing I want to stress is things that we're doing here at the Shammany are top-notch as far as, you know, preparedness. I believe, based on things that we've done since I've been here in this position, we've gotten better each year, and we'll continue to do that. We won't stay stagnant, and what I'm about to present to you tonight is a program called Navigate 360. And it's not going to stop anything, but it's going to cut down on that lag time as far as communication pieces within the building. That'll help first responders and administrators react to the situation. So I am excited. I know staff's excited with some of the information that's been presented to them already. So with further ado, we'll move on, because I know somebody behind me just said I only have three minutes. The first thing, the first thing we need to do, or had to do, was update our emergency response manual. And this is a program, the program Navigate Prepared 360 allows staff to electronically go in through their computer system, whether it's through a login system or through their clever that they already have loaded on their system, and has our emergency response manual in a flip chart. That flip chart is individual tabs, and the teacher just clicks on the tab, or the staff member clicks on the tab, and it gives them a breakdown of what their responsibility is to do in that given emergency situation. And there's a series of tabs. I think there's 17 in the original manual that has been updated. And again, teachers will be reviewing this throughout the next couple of weeks prior to leaving, and we will edit this as needed in the future, moving forward, again, as needed. But this is what the inside of a tab would look like. It has a purpose, responsibilities, and then underneath responsibilities is a series of checkpoints that you would see as well. The respond portion of this app is probably the biggest feature that we have. If an emergency was to happen in a particular building, any teacher or staff member can set that alarm off. And when I say set the alarm off, it's a notification. It's not an actual 911 call. It's a notification to the staff and the people assigned to that particular building. All administrators are assigned to these buildings, so if something were to happen at Walter Miller, central office is also getting notified. So, and I'll explain that notification piece in a minute. So here in this situation, it's a weather, it's a weather drill or a training piece, and you can see that on the left-hand side, the cloud with the rain. I set this alarm off. It gives the alarm duration period, and then it's asking for check-ins. I'll ask you to look down at the 2706 number. That number is the live number of accountability people in the high school at that given period of time that I set this alarm off. And right now, what you see is nobody's accounted for. That'll change once the staff has gotten notification. They're going to do check-ins. They'll do check-ins of themselves, and they'll do check-ins of the students in front of them. The teacher will get two notifications. One, a pushed notification through the email system, or a text message in their, on their phone app. So this is what they would see if they happened to have the program up, they would see this alarm was set, and then they would click on View to see what that alarm is. Once they click on that View, it brings them to their class rosters. So whatever particular period this is, I happen to choose the English, English First Period there in red down below, if you see that on the left-hand side. Once I click on that, I'm going to get all those students that are enrolled in that class period, and that's updated nightly. So those class roles are, I don't want to say live, but they're up to date as most information that we have available. Up top is the OK, not OK, not here. So staff not in the building. They're at home. They have a sick day or whatever. They can respond to this, and we have now accounted for them. So the teacher clicks on their first period class there, and all those students have populated now. The teacher's responsibility is, if you look at that X, every student right now is not accounted for. All right? So when the teacher clicks on that X, and it's a simple click, it'll turn green, saying that that student is in front of them. If the student happened to be in class and left to go to the nurse, or left and went to the bathroom, and we shut down, there's a different code. There's, I call it a mustard dash, and then we have to account for that child somewhere else on our records. All right? So the teacher begins to click on this, and you'll see that the check marks and that little mustard color I was talking about is there. Once the teacher submits the roster, administration and first responders coming to the scene are going to get this live update. I want you to also notice that the blue star that I have up in the right-hand corner, it says add students. Let's just say we went into a lockdown situation, and little Paul Mean was walking past my class, and I grabbed him in here to be safe. I can add Paul Mean to my roster here, and he is now accounted for. So that teacher who marked Paul Mean unaccounted for, I have now accounted for him as the classroom This is what happens now as the administrator. That 2706 number that I originally gave you has now decreased from this class. I only did one class here. I have 12 kids accounted for, one that I don't know where he is, and nobody adds it. So you can see that it's coming down in real time, and it'll continue to do that as the Another neat thing about this app is, up in the top left-hand corner, is a map of the building. Each one of those blocks is labeled. About a year and a half ago, we had the, we had the company come in and take pictures of our building, and each one of those pictures of every room in this, in this district, including storage closets, are labeled in a map of each building, in each of our buildings in the district. So if I were to click on, and I'll just say C2, I would get a visual of the classroom that's three-dimensional, or 360 view of it, allowing first responders and administrators to see what that classroom would look like in an anticipation that they're responding to that classroom area. So the outside, they also have an outside picture of the classroom, which is important to see, you know, the doorways and what they're planning for if they had to go into the classroom. But that three-dimensional look, or that 360 look, does help first responders and administrators in a time of emergency with students and staff in the classrooms. Again, this app is accessible both through the cell and through the laptops. If the cell phones are on silent, or if the laptops are on silent, there's an override system that we use, and the teachers, majority of the teachers, eight of the, eight of the 10 buildings that we did have, and myself and Mr. Burns will go back in the summer and do the other two buildings. There's an override system that'll give them, one, the email, and two, the sound will chirp on their phones or on the laptop device. So it's, it's foolproof as far as if somebody has things on mute. So again, this isn't to stop anything. This is just an extra layer of safety and security that we've put in play with the help of your support. I will, I and the rest of the team here will continue to do things that are good for safety and security for our district, and, you know, each year you should see something different coming out of my office, and this is just one more layer that we have in the area of response. That's all I have. Any questions? Ms. Hollenbeck?
Every semester, our teachers have this app.
Yes.
Support staff will have the app.
Their training only went to the teachers so far. The next rollout is the support staff in the fall. Sure. So Knightly, our student system is talking to our Navigate system. So whatever is updated at 12:00 AM is carried over into this system that day. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Means.
Mr. Allen, that's our report.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Thank you, Mr. Means. That brings us to first round of public comment. Ms. Burns, do we have any signups?
There are no signups.
No signups. That was for agenda items only. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on agenda items who did not sign up? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment, and that brings us to Agenda Item Two. Mr. Cirillo, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 2.01 Personnel Administrative Appointments, resolved at the Shammany Board of School District, excuse me, resolved at the Shammany Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments of administrative staff. Mr. Stephen Garska, Principal for the Shammany High School, effective July 1st, 2022.
Thank you, Mrs. Cirillo. The motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. I'll give that to you. Any comments, discussion on the motion? Call to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. We are at nine?
Nine.
Would you? Please approach the podium and introduce yourselves to our Shammany community.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Steve Garska, and I guess for the time being, I get to follow that statement from now on with, I'm the principal of the Shammany High School. Very proud and excited to get started. I want to thank all the board members, the cabinet, and Dr. McGee. Very much looking forward to getting involved in the many traditions here in the Shammany, working with staff, students, and parents and community members. I really just can't wait to get in the building and get started. I hope to be able to meet some students and staff members here before the school year lets out, and just, you know, I'm really excited to get to work. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Welcome, Steve.
All right, that brings us to Agenda Section Three, which are items for approval at our next public meeting. I will read those off. That is 3.01 will be routine business matters. That's treasuries report, bids, budget transfers, et cetera. 3.02, the Aramark Food Services Contract. The 3.03 will be stop-loss insurance for 2022 through 2023. 3.04 will be our year-end budget transfers. 3.05 will be budgetary adjustments for federal and other programs. 3.06 will be 2022 through 2023, our final operating budget. 3.07, Student Activity Accounts. 3.08, the ESS Substitute Services Contract. 3.09 will be recommitment of fund balance. 3.10, the student settlement agreements. 3.11, Sunday Facility Usage. 3.12, acceptance of a donation from the Shammany Kids Club. 3.13 will be acceptance of a donation to Herbert Hoover Elementary School from the Shammany Kids Club. And that is, that will be all of our action items at our next meeting. Is there any discussion on any of those items from the Board? No? Seeing none, that brings us to our committee reports, and that brings us to our first Business Operations. Mrs. Hollenbeck, please.
We had our last Business Operations Committee meeting last Wednesday, I think it was, in this building, in this room, to discuss the final budget, which we will be approving at the next meeting. We have no more meetings scheduled for this year. I'm assuming we will be back sometime in September-ish to do the new school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenbeck. That brings us to Educational Development. Ms. Bowman, please.
The Educational Development Committee is adjourned until next school year, so no update at this time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bowman. Facilities and Planning, Mr. Sullivan.
There is a meeting in this room tomorrow night at 6:30, and we'll be discussing the Fields Project, the update of the Fields Project, and the new school to be hopefully built on this property here, the elementary school.
Thank you. Policy, Mr. Cirillo.
Policy Committee will reconvene in the fall.
And back to you with Representative Reports.
Bucks County IU.
5.01 IU.
Yep, Bucks County IU had a nice graduation last evening at the Centennial School District, William Tennant. Congratulations to all the graduates. And that's it. We will reconvene again later this month to move into the parameters of the fall.
Very good. That brings us to the Shammany Education Foundation. Mr. Kovitz?
The Shammany Education Foundation will meet at Maple Point on Monday, June 13th, at 4:00 PM. At that meeting, they'll be reading nominations for, nominations and voting for new board members for the offices of President, Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurer. Information about the Foundation Board and how to submit a nomination can be found at the NEF website. That's shammany.org/NEF. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz. 5.03, our Pennsylvania School Board Association Liaison. Ms. Bowman?
There are no new updates at this time.
Okay, newly appointed, and we're still settling into that for all, it was Mr. Perattano's gig, so. That brings us to 5.04, Technical School. That is me. As we are doing, the Board met, I'm sorry, I'll say, the Board met May 23rd, 2022, the Joint Board, I want to say, as we are doing, its end-of-year housekeeping, which involves employment issues, resignations, retirements, budgetary transfers, and such. That was the gist of, I should say, the bulk of that meeting, what I like to call housekeeping. However, we did note, and I lost it already, darn it, I apologize. Here it is. The Board approved the, Mr. Thomas Smith for the Superintendent, the Superintendent of Pennsbury School District will be the Superintendent of Record of the Bucks County Technical High School for one year, his term beginning July 1st, 2022. We welcome him aboard. And a more interesting thing, I'll do a couple quick updates of student activities. For Shammany, we are proud to say that our ninth-grade students, two of them, were appointed Students of the Month. That is Thomas Gula and Jennifer Solis. The class of 2022 celebrated their senior prom on Friday, May 6th, at the Marion at Cinnamon's in New Jersey. 300 of our students attended, was well-attended, and, you know, it's, I know, we had it here in our, you know, trying to get all the kids together. We all went through COVID, so many activities were canceled. I can tell you, they were, report back was, they were thrilled and all on fantastic behavior because of it. We had senior awards for the class of 2022 after a two-year hiatus. We had 67 students received monetary scholarships, presidential awards, and/or distinguished student awards. The Bucks County Technical High School Foundation for Educational Excellence provided the majority of the monetary awards. There were $800,000 in scholarships from post-secondary schools given out that evening. The, May 23rd through May 27th, the class of 2022 went to Florida to, for their senior trip, primarily Disney Magic Kingdom, and again, they were on fantastic behavior, thrilled to be there, and even the chaperones reported back, everyone had a fantastic time and were very well behaved. And that concludes my report. Well, no, because unfortunately, it's on the same date as ours, and it doesn't appear that we will be representing, being able to represent Shammany there, and that's unfortunate. We will be here with our high school class. Also, Bristol Township is in the same boat. It happens. Very difficult, again, through COVID, to try and schedule things. You have to schedule them so far out, and, you know, trying to coordinate the six, six sending districts, am I correct on that? I always get that wrong. It was bound to happen, and unfortunately, two of our districts scheduled graduation on the same evening as the Tech School. So, but that is Wednesday, the 18th. Next, 15th? Why do I have the 18th? Because Friday I'm going away, that's why, sorry. The next meeting of the Bucks County Technical High School Joint Board will be June 27th, 2022, 7:30, in the boardroom at the Tech School. And that concludes my Tech Report. Sure topics for the Board? Seeing none? Did I miss? Oh, no, sorry. Now we are at our second round, the Board Comment. Public Comment. I think that's, you know, I'm sorry, my agenda's out of order here. Public Comment. Anyone have anything they would like to speak, address the Board or the district? Okay, again, seeing none. Close the second round of the Public Comment, and I open it up to Board Comment, because...
I just wanted to comment, Mrs. Hollenbeck and myself attended the Pequesting Ceremony to Honor Veterans in our area, and dedicated a mural, Pequesting dedicated a mural in honor of Sarah Mitchell. It was a fantastic project. I was very impressed with the work that was completed by the AV Club, the students, Ms. Heilich and Mrs. Richardson, and thank you to everybody that contributed. Well done. It was a great event. Thank you.
That's correct. I was there. Present.
You didn't sit with us. I'll go second comment here. Yes, and I actually was there over the weekend trying to work out the canopy that was laid over the mural. So I don't want to take any credit for that, but I was there. No, that was fantastic. I am born and raised from Feasterville through and through, and that was definitely, Feasterville, Lower Southampton, it's best. It was a beautiful family affair, you know, recognizing someone that was part of the community. Everyone really did a fantastic job. Dr. McGee, everyone on down, it was really something. Field Day, I was at Field Day last week. You realize how important things are to kids at Field Day, but what was also really great to see is, I was able to sneak over there for about an hour, and there was at least 500 parents or so there taking part in that, which I thought was really fantastic to see. I loved seeing that. I, this weekend, I drove out to Wyomissing, Pennsylvania, I'm going to keep on going here, so bear with me, guys, to attend the Shammany volleyball, boys' volleyball quarterfinal state game, which they unfortunately lost, which was their first loss of the year, which is why I'm kind of bringing it up. They were, I think they were 22-0 or 21-0 at that point. They won the district, down two games to zero, came back, two games to two, lost in the fifth game. They were a fantastic team, really, what a great representation of the Shammany. Nice kids, good kids, worked really hard, kudos to them. That's all I have. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, welcome again to Stephen Garska. I just wanted to say, welcome again to Stephen Garstka. Congratulations to our graduates. And I just, I couldn't help but notice 3.13, I wanted to say a special thank you to Shammany Kids Club for their donation to Hoover. My kids have been through Shammany Kids Club, so that's it. Thank you.
So, yeah, again, Mr. Garstka, welcome aboard. Great to have you with us. And, and just to piggyback on the comment about Shammany Kids Club, I have a son who's now, and I think in his fifth year, working for Shammany Kids Club. They do a really wonderful job, and they're always very generous, too, as far as donations, them and NEF, they're fantastic. So it's just part of the wonderful partnership that we have with the community, with the support that they give us. And they make a lot of things, they make a lot of things happen, especially, especially for those parents of kids that need a little extra helping hand either before and after school. So if you've been on that end, you'll understand how essential Shammany Kids Club is. And then, last but not least, since it's that time of year, especially for us educators and students and alike, we're counting down the days, and I just wanted to wish everybody a really wonderful and happy summer vacation off, and looking forward to seeing everybody back come the first of the school year again. Thank you. Yeah, I, yeah, I just won't be here for that, so.
Mr. Allen, may I, please?
Certainly.
I'd just like to deflect some of the credit that Mr. Sporni gave to me about bequesting. That is entirely the bequesting staff, Mr. Hunt, Ms. Heilich, Ms. Richardson, Mr. Barnes, and the bequesting staff. I just got a good seat at a wonderful event. So, thank you.
For once, I have very little to add, other than I am looking forward to graduation. Again, welcome aboard, new high school principal. As we, you know, discussed with him, we, all districts like to think of themselves as a community. I, I like to think of Shammany as an exceptional community with very deep roots, and welcome aboard. Good luck to you. And with that, bring the board comment to a close. We have future meetings. We have our Facility and Planning Meeting tomorrow night, here, 6:30. And the next public board meeting will be June 21, at 7:00 PM. 7:00 PM, we'll try, in this room. And that brings us to 6.05. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hollenback. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, let's stay longer.
Let's stay longer, yeah. Motion passes nine, zero. Thank you all.